Hello, I'm Mark Ellof, President and CEO of the Carthage Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to the Carthage City Council R9 School Board Video Recording Presentation of the Candidates Forum hosted by the Carthage Chamber. All the candidates vying for the City Council and the R9 School Board have been invited. Each candidate running for office has been allowed three minutes to present their reasons for seeking their office and to highlight their campaign platform. Challengers for a seat will be presented first, followed by the incumbent. In cases where race is being contested and an incumbent is not running, or there is more than one challenger, the candidates will be presented in alphabetical order. Contact information for all the presenting candidates is listed, and you are encouraged to contact them with any questions you may have. The presentations will begin with the school board candidates, challengers first in alphabetical order, then the incumbent. The City Council candidates, challengers, will be in alphabetical order. One item on the ballot for June 2nd is the question regarding the extension of the current property levy for debt service to build more classrooms and renovate old ones at the Carthage Technical Center's South and North campuses. The current South campus was built about 10 years ago with no school district tax revenue. By building new classrooms at the South Technical Center and remodeling at the North location, it will free up about six classrooms in the high school, which are also needed. Additionally, programs there would focus on providing adults with workforce training, which is vitally important to our local businesses and industries. The Carthage Chamber of Commerce strongly supports approval of the bond extension and encourages everyone to vote yes. We want to thank all the candidates for taking the time to record their presentations and remind everyone to vote Tuesday, June 2nd.
Hello, my name is Ryan Collier, and I'm running for Carthage R9 School Board this year. I grew up in Carl Junction but have lived in Carthage for around 18 years. Both of my children have attended Carthage High School and have been very active in its programming. Laney is now a senior at Ozark Christian College and Grant is a senior at Carthage High School. My wife is a teacher at the Intermediate Center and has taught in Carthage her whole career. We consider Carthage home. I currently work as the Director of Rehab Services for Freeman Yosho Hospital, and I worked at McKeon Brooks as a staff PT for many years. So, why am I running for school board this year? I want to give back to my community and support our school system. I've always believed that strong schools make strong communities, and I believe that Carthage is strong. My kids have received an excellent education from Carthage, and I would be proud to be part of the board to help make decisions for future generations. There are several issues that I receive questions about, so I'd like to address those today. First of all, I am a proponent of the dual-language program and support its growth. Like any other program we have to be accountable for, we have to be accountable for the efficacy, but I believe that learning two languages is invaluable for our children. The program will allow students many different opportunities as they get older and start to enter the workforce. I hope that this program can expand more in the future. Secondly, I do support the growth of the tech center and really any other project that allows our students to grow and excel. The tech center expansion will enhance the ability for our students to utilize the programs we offer, and it will provide much-needed room in our high school. However, I realize that all of this usually takes taxpayer dollars, and I will always consider if the use is justified and worth the expenditure, we must be fiscally responsible. Lastly, I'm very pro-teacher as well. I grew up with two educators in my home, and currently I'm married to another, so I know what trials and tribulations come with teaching. We must support teachers and all staff. Some of you know just how much they need that support if you have homeschooled your children during this COVID crisis. Carthage in the school district have bright futures, and I want to be part of them. I believe that I can do a great job with this position. My decisions will always be based on what's best for the students, faculties, and staff, and the taxpayers. I will be glad to answer any questions you should have regarding my views. Please go to my Facebook page at Ryan Collier for R9 School Board and message me. Thank you for your time and opportunity the Chamber has granted the candidates to discuss our views. I would appreciate your vote on June 2nd.
Hello, my name is Robyn Hicklin, and I'm running for a position on the Carthage R9 School Board. The reason I am seeking a spot on the school board is to make a difference for students in our district. As we continue to face challenges in our school district, it is important to have people on the Board of Education who understand the educational process and comprehend the challenges of working with a diverse student population. I am tremendously proud of what Carthage School District has accomplished, and I have seen the success on a personal level. My two children have attended Carthage Schools. My son Carson is going to be a freshman at Carthage High School, and my daughter just completed her senior year. Hadley, my daughter, will be attending Missouri Southern State University and Ozark Christian College in the fall, majoring in secondary education with the English emphasis and the youth ministry. I have personally seen the ways my children have been positively shaped by academics and extracurricular programming. I want to ensure we continue creating opportunities for students to grow. I'm a passionate about education. I've been working in education for the past 26 years. During this time, I have served as a history teacher and coach at Carthage High School, a middle school assistant principal in Joplin, and currently the Director of Upward Bound at Missouri Southern State University. My vast experience in education has provided me the unique perspective of the different levels of education. I have experienced working with low-income and diverse students and have helped implement education programs that have greatly improved student outcomes. Additionally, my wife, Dr. Sharona Hicklin, was an elementary teacher at Columbia Elementary and assistant principal at Fairview and Steadly Elementary Schools, and she is currently an Associate Professor of Teacher Education at MSSU. Education is something that my family believes strongly in. This profession has shaped each of my family members in different yet powerful ways. As the Director of Upward Bound, I have the opportunity to work with five area school districts. The Upward Bound program is designed to help traditionally underrepresented populations attend college. Our relationships with these districts provide me a unique perspective of the factors contributing to student success. As a school board member, I would be able to bring this knowledge to the board to help support and improve academic programming. My background in education and my passion to see students succeed has equipped me with the skills and desire to serve in this capacity. I want to be a voice for students, educators, and our community. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote on June 2nd.
Hello, if you don't already know me, I'm Nathan Scott with Scott Property Solutions. I was asked why I wanted to be a part of the Carthage R9 School Board. Being a Carthage native and a part of this wonderful community for the past 29 years has prepared me to give great insight into the school board as well as attending Carthage R9 Schools. I have three main points as to why. The first is focus on the future, next is support teachers and faculty, and lastly is to increase community involvement within our schools. People never fail to appreciate my compassion, professional integrity, and fierce dedication when working or volunteering. First is focused on the future. To see Carthage students grow into new and ever-changing areas of technology, job skills, life skills, and endeavors. To focus on improving our dual-language programs and getting them into more elementary schools. To make more readily available for the whole community. To expand the current early childhood center programs so that kids could go all day and not just half-day learning, which would benefit both the students as well as the parents with childcare and allow more critical classroom time. And to advance on fundamental learning opportunities. I also believe that our community needs to have a mindset shift in celebration of both college and trade-based jobs. For far too long, we have pushed just college as the only option for kids getting close to graduation. We need some local partners that have blue-collar jobs, electricians, plumbers, factory jobs, et cetera, to create a learning on both types of career choices and the depth that goes with them. The next is supporting teachers and faculty. To offer smaller classes to give more individualized learning to the students, to help the support and the staff with students in our culturally diverse demographics, and creating classroom environments that increase learning for all. To work on long-term retention of the teachers and increase support where needed. Finally, the last goal is creating more community involvement within our schools. I would love to see the increase of community involvement on the school level. The goal as parents is to raise kids to be the best versions of themselves. I think this could best be done through creating multiple support systems to encourage them to fulfill their goals and dreams, to see local businesses and schools partnering through community events and fundraisers to support kids, to open the school buildings and use resources to help the community become more actively involved in our children's learning and lives. For all these reasons and more, vote Nathan Scott for the Carthage R9 School Board. Together, we can make a difference in our children's future and present times. Go Tigers! If you have any additional questions, don't hesitate to reach out, 417-793-9436. Thanks, and vote Nathan Scott for the Carthage R9 School Board.
Well, thank you very much, Carthage Chamber of Commerce, Mark Ellof, for allowing me to be recorded to talk about why I want to be on the school board. So, again, my name is Patrick Scott, and I'm going to be running for the Carthage School Board, and that date is June 2nd. So, we're in unprecedented times right now with COVID-19. I hate everything that's going on with that, with businesses, with our schools, that our kids got their education kind of stripped away from them, and then obviously the folks that are seniors that got normalcy of their school year and graduation and everything like that, that has changed for them dramatically. But anyway, I know we'll survive, and I will say, I hope everyone out there is praying for our country to heal and folks that got the coronavirus, that hopefully they are getting well, feeling better, and we'll get through this. So, let's get back to the why I'm running for school. I've got a vested interest in Carthage. I've lived here for many, many years. I've got four kids. I've got a daughter that will be a senior, a son that will be a sophomore, a son that will be an eighth grader, and what I call my oops baby, but he is not, he hates it when I call him that. So, but he is going to be, he was kindergarten this year, but he'll be a first grader starting in the fall. So, that gives me some advantage from a standpoint that some of the other potential board members may not have, which is I've got representation of kids in different schools, different things that are happening. So, what I want to use is that to help our school system. Our school system is the bedrock of our city. I love our city. We've got, you know, the Maple Leaf Parade, to Marion Days, Food Truck Friday, all these different things going for it. But if our education system is not doing well, it will hurt the town in the long run. I'm not saying we're there. I think our educators are doing a great job of it, but I want to continue that pace of improving our system to where our kids are learning and doing things like the Carthage Tech Center. I've volunteered for that for many, many years. It's a great program, and we need more technical trade jobs out there. And then also, education's helped me get to where I am, so I'm a firm believer in that, and I hope I can help the school system to get our kids to be excited about education and moving forward.
Thank you, Mark, for providing each candidate with the opportunity to share their thoughts with the Carthage Chamber of Commerce. First, why am I running for the school board? I'm a huge advocate for public education. I've served 41 years in some capacity in education, 16 of those as a science teacher coach, 21 years as either a building-level or district-level administrator, and four years at Pittsburgh State where I was an instructor in their educational leadership department. I've served in rural, suburban, and urban school districts with student enrollments ranging from 800 students to over 27,000 students. My family and I have lived in Carthage for 33 years during two different stints. I grew up as an educator in the Carthage School District where I served 19 years. Of those 19 years, 13 of those I served as a science teacher. I was also the head boys track coach and a football assistant coach. And then became the junior high assistant principal for four years and helped start U-turn alternative school where I was a principal. My final two years in Carthage, I was the assistant superintendent for instruction, and I then retired from the Independent School District in 2006, and our family moved back to Carthage where our daughter is a proud Carthage graduate, and our grandson currently attends one of our elementary schools. As a potential board member, I realize it's not about me, but it's about we, you know, we must be representative of the larger Carthage community. For those of you that don't know me, I want to say that I believe I can foster a collaborative environment, as evidenced by my life's work where I've been able to create successful teams, whether it be in the classroom, on the athletic field, at the building, or at district level. I fully understand that district administrators, teachers, principals, and support staff make the magic of learning possible, and as a potential board member, I believe the board must work to cohesively support our educators in focusing on what's in the best interests of our students. I would like to ensure the district is committed to utilizing our finite resources to effectively fulfill their district strategic plan. I'd also like to clear up a few misconceptions in relation to my position as a potential board candidate. First, I support the dual-language program. There's extensive brain-based research that this instructional model is highly effective in meeting the needs of students. Second, I am a huge proponent of the bond issue for the expansion or renovation of the Carthage Technical Center, which I believe is one of the crown jewels of the district. I will be fully retired from public education in June of 2020, and I would like to enter the next phase of service to our community. And finally, I am 100% supportive of our district administrators, educators, in relation to fulfilling our strategic plan, vision, mission, and goals, you know, would like to support them in this endeavor. And last, I would appreciate your vote on June 2nd, and go Tigers!
Good morning. My name is Karen Wilkinson, and I just want to take this chance to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to put my name out there and what I represent. I was born and raised in Carthage, graduated from here. I began my teaching career right here in Carthage, Missouri. I began teaching at Hawthorne Elementary, that's no longer here for Charles Payden, loved it. I taught at Mark Twain under Laurel Rosenthal, and I have to tell you, that was the experience that set me running for education because I loved it. I also taught in the state of Kansas and in Florida, and my experience in Florida was at a migrant community where the Hispanic population, student population, was 69 to 70%. And again, that was a wonderful experience, and I feel like that's where the rubber met the road in my teaching career and just fanned that flame of passion for education. My reasons for running is I graduated here, my husband graduated here, our children are going to school here, our grandchildren are going here, and so I love Carthage. I honestly have a passion and want to be a part of this community, be a part of the education process, and to give back. They were wonderful for me. I have great memories for Carthage, and so I would like to be a part of where I can give back, and hopefully that would be through the school board. My campaign platform, first and foremost, I would like to make sure and be a part of giving the best education possible to all students in Carthage, whether it be the preschool, kindergarten, all the way up to high school graduates. Another part of my campaign is, when I think of being on a school board, for me, I would see, would like to see a higher priority put on student achievement, and that's a process, it's something that happens overnight, but I believe that the experts in that area are going to be our teachers. And so, when I think of focusing a high priority on student achievement, I would like to make sure that our experts, our teachers, have the time they need, the time to teach, the time to conference, the time to collaborate with other teachers, to collaborate with our district, that they have all the resources that they need. And so, you know, I think of where you are, teachers, on the COVID virus, you have really been busy. I also am for open and honest lines of communication on the school board. I'm for safe schools, and I want to be a great steward of the taxpayers' money. Thank you so much for your vote.
Hello, my name is Wayne Wilson, and I'm running for one of the positions of the Carthage R9 School Board. And today, I'd like to just visit with you briefly about why I feel I'd be a good candidate and why my experiences in the past would be a good asset to the Carthage Schools. One of the main things that I want to talk about, or one of the first things that I'd like to talk about, is my financial experience in this area. I have been a local banker for over 20 years in the Carthage and Joplin areas. I have a degree from Missouri Southern in economics and finance. I feel that this is going to be an important, you know, knowledge base that will be used in the coming months. Unfortunately, we're dealing with some unprecedented times right now, and I feel that financial experience and knowledge is going to be a great asset that will need to be used by the Carthage Schools in the coming years. We have a lot of obstacles that we're going to have to overcome, and I feel this financial experience and knowledge will be beneficial to the Carthage Schools that I can bring. Another aspect that I would like to talk about is my personal stake in the community and in the Carthage Schools. As a local banker, like I've said, I feel that there's a lot of aspects that a good school will bring to local businesses. I have personal experience that a school will, the Carthage Schools will bring excellent opportunities to local businesses and will help grow the community. I have two daughters that are in the Carthage School District, one that's going to be a sophomore at the high school, and one that's going to be a seventh grader at the junior high. So, I have a personal stake in the success of the Carthage Schools in this community and how they will grow and move forward in this with the policies and aspects that will bring forward if I become a board member. So, I hope that I can become a board member and help with those experiences and help rewrite some policies or keep continuing to grow with the policies that are in place to grow the Carthage School District. Some of the programs that I feel I can help promote and continue to grow is the tech center expansion. I am firmly behind that. I feel that the expansion will help grow the industry and also help the community to expand, and the Carthage High School is currently at capacity, and we need to continue to grow to accommodate future growth within this community. Another is a dual-language program. I feel that the dual-language program is a great asset that Carthage can provide to local employers, and I know as a local employer that the dual-language and bilingual employees is a great asset that employers are constantly looking for in this community and in the nation. So, I definitely feel that those things are important. A few other things that I feel are very important is, of course, putting our children first and moving forward with growing the Carthage community. I appreciate your support for the election on June 2nd. I would love your vote. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Jones, and I'm running for the Carthage R9 School Board. I'm a 1995 graduate of Carthage High School. I've been married to my wife, Susanna, for 31 years, coming up on May 20th, and we have two children, Olivia, who is 26, and Logan, who is 23, all graduates of Carthage High School. We've lived in Carthage for our entire lives, with the exception for two years when we moved away. And so, we really love the Carthage community and that hometown feeling that we get, and that's really one of the reasons why I ran for school board originally. When we moved back, we noticed that there was a change in our schools, and I did some substitute teaching, and I felt like instead of complaining, I could maybe help solve a problem. So, I ran and I was elected, and I've been a board member for 12 years now, and it's been a great opportunity to serve our community, but it's been a great opportunity for us as a group of members, seven board members, to work together to find solutions for the issues that we have in Carthage. So, obviously, we're growing. We built a new high school 10 years ago, and now we're at capacity at that school, and we've added some additional buildings and really tried to get the voice of our customer, which is you, as taxpayers of the community, on board so we know what you want and try to make a roadmap to meet the needs educationally of our kids and through facilities and everything that goes into educating our kids. And so, on, I guess, June 2nd now, love the opportunity for you to come out and vote, and I'd appreciate your vote, but it's been a great opportunity. And if you have questions about school board, you're more than welcome to call me. I'll tell you what I know, but if you want to experience it, we have a meeting every month, and that's a great way to get a better insight into what we do for our community. So, our main number-one goal is to just do what's right for kids, and that's part of our mission, and it's also part of our mission as a district to be lifelong learners. And so, we always have to change and evolve, and I've been proud to be able to serve our community and be a part of that tradition of always making improvements for our kids and our community. And I appreciate your consideration on June 2nd. Thank you.
Good day, citizens of Carthage. My name is Daniel Beck, or Dan, or Danny, depending on when we may have met over the years. I am a candidate for City Council, Ward 4. A little about myself, Lana Chandler-Williams, and I recently married and blended my two daughters and her four children with eight grandchildren, as well as my mother, Carolyn Beck. I was born and raised in Carthage, graduating 1979, attended Missouri Southern, and graduated from the University of Missouri 1983. I began my career with Leggett and Platt, serving branches in Kentucky, Missouri, and California. I have been fortunate to experience three of the major components of business, R&amp;D, engineering, sales, and manufacturing operations. By residing in different places across the nation, I have seen cities make positive growth choices and implement poor policies that negatively affect the community. Currently, I am managing the sales and operations for Imomo Technology and Beyond Smart, serving the furniture industry with electronic components and furniture online or retail stores with finished upholstered goods. Since returning to Carthage a few years ago, it is time once again for me to serve my hometown. With my years of leadership experience, I bring solid business approach of fiscal responsibility and understanding of utilizing available resources and generating positive relations with the citizens of Carthage, Missouri. While serving on other club boards, I have learned the process of governing through Robert's Rules of Orders. Upholding our constitution, laws, and conservative approach will guide our city to prosper during this unusual time in our history. Thank you for your support, and I would greatly appreciate your vote for Daniel Beck on Tuesday, June 2nd. May we all stay healthy as we reopen our state and city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Diggs, and I'm looking forward for the opportunity of representing you as a member of the Carthage City Council. Having been born here, graduated high school here, and settling my family here, Carthage is, like I know it is from many of you, my home. Over the past 35 years, I've had the good fortune of seeing our city continuously grow and progress, and I'm proud to know that we have not lost sight of our heritage in the games. As a city, as a member of the City Council, I will work to move forward in this way. At this moment, as you are all well aware, we are working through an onerous time. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of our frontline workers, especially the emergency personnel. to all of our frontline workers, especially the emergency personnel who are working to guide us through this in the best way possible. Carthage and the individuals who make up the community are near and dear to my heart. So with an elbow shake and a wave, please come join me and social distance on June 2 and cast your vote for our local candidates. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dustin Edge and I'm running for City Council in Ward Three. My wife and I have lived here for the past 10 years and we love our city. Prior to living here, I actually worked for the city part-time in my high school and college years. We, as I mentioned, we love our city, which is rich in history and ripe for continued improvement and growth. Because my family loves the city, I've got a vested interest in the future of our city and the decisions that are made. Based upon that, I'd love to be involved in those decisions that are made for the city of Carthage and its continued improvement and growth. For the past nine years, I've worked in the financial project industry. And by that, I mean, I've been able to work with projects that I've been involved in scoping, planning, and completion of projects. Based upon that background, I think I'd make a great candidate for the city of Carthage. I'd also appreciate your consideration at the polls on June 2 and I hope that everybody stays safe and healthy during these unprecedented times of wear and dirty.
Hello, my name is Mary Schwab and I'm running for City Council because I love Carthage and want to help our community reach its full potential. I'm 35 years old and have been an almost lifelong resident of Carthage. I graduated from Carthage High School and have been an active member in our community since. I attend Good Shepherd Lutheran Church here in Carthage and have one son, Jeff Brown, who is 13, and a fiance, Anthony Preston, who has just recently moved to Carthage as well. I chose to raise my son here because growing up on Carthage, in Carthage on Main Street, was almost magical. I was surrounded by the grandest homes where I could see the double-decker bus drive by with tourists taking pictures of our great city. Most of you know that Carthage was a tourism epicenter in the 80s and 90s, but that tourism brought lots of revenue to our town during that time. That has subsided some since. I believe that a lot of that has to do with our city lacking attractive activities for families to participate in when tourists come to town. If elected as a member of the Carthage City Council, I would strive to help our city to restore its appeal to visitors and our residents while ensuring that we are making fiscally responsible financial decisions to promote sustainability of the city budget for years to come. For the last eight and a half years, I have served as the Director at Little Folks School in Carthage, which is located at the First Baptist Church. When I started my position at Little Folks, we had about 32 children enrolled. And before coronavirus hit, we had almost 150 children enrolled in our programs. Building Little Folks into a successful business has been a labor of love, to say the least, but I have enjoyed taking on this large project because access to quality, reliable, and affordable childcare helps strengthen our community. It provides a peace of mind for working families that many rural communities are not quite as lucky to have. I really began to develop my love for public service during this time and I'm passionate about serving our community in other capacities as well. Over the last several months, I've been honored to sit on the Vision Carthage Board. Vision Carthage, if you're not already aware, does a lot to help revitalize our city. Vision has taken on several projects and last, in the past, have beautified Carthage and continues to come up with fun and innovative ideas to make Carthage an even better place to live. I sit on three committees at Vision, the Murals Committee, Christmas Carthage, and Lighting and Sound. I really enjoy the collaboration that I'm able to have with other members of the Board and hope to be able to do the same with other City Council members in that capacity if elected. In closing, I believe that city leadership, as we have learned during the pandemic, is very important. It's important that we elect leaders who prioritize what is best for the residents of Carthage now and for years to come. I would be that kind of leader and if elected, I will work hard for Carthage and each and every one of you. And because every vote matters, I would appreciate yours in the municipal election on June 2. Thank you.